All right, welcome to this afternoon's work session. First we have called order in row call Commissioner Gail Hambrick.
Oh, yes, sir.
Commissioner Gail Hambrick. Your volume is down, it doesn't appear that you're on mute. Commissioner Demont Davis?
Present.
Commissioner Felicia Franklin?
She's working with the company, she's on the phone.
Okay. Show her as being present as having technical difficulties. Commissioner Gail Hambrick. Still can't hear you. She's having technical. Commissioner Hambrick?
No.
Well, I see her box lighting up, but I don't hear her at all.
I see a raised hand, can you click on the raised hand and see if that's her?
Commissioner Hambrick, can you push the raised hand button?
Or less.
Okay, she's signified by raising, having her hand raised. You might want to check the volume on the screen as well. All right. Commissioner Franklin, can you hear us? We can't hear.
Can you all hear me?
We hear you now, loud and clear. That's why I asked you that about five minutes ago, Jason. Lord have mercy. Uh huh. See me after the meeting. Okay, Madam Clerk, everyone is present accounted for. At this time, are there any preliminary items for the next BLC meeting that anyone would like to discuss?
No.
All right, here and now, we're going to the work session, discussing items. First will be the update of county records management plan ordinance. Mr. Jason Brokens.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Board, Chairman, I appreciate your time tonight. I have brought with me my Archives and Records Division Manager Amelia Winstead, she will be giving the bulk of the presentation. But just as an overview, the current records ordinance was passed in 1996. And so what we are proposing to do is to update the ordinance to reflect today's business practices and how we generate records. And so with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Winstead.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So the Georgia Records Act requires each local government to have in place a resolution or ordinance that establishes a records management plan. That plan must include the official or the officer responsible for coordinating records management in the county, the retention schedules governing county records, and provisions for the maintenance and security of the records. Clayton County approved its ordinance in 1996. That was 25 years ago. I had a lot blacker hair.
Shit. And some of us had hair.
So much has changed in our record keeping technologies and our business practices since 1996. We'd like to update our records ordinance to address new technologies and the challenges these technologies have brought to the county, as well as to lay, help us lay a foundation for managing and securing those vital assets, information assets of the county. The new ordinance would be a rewrite, not simply an amendment. Our current ordinance is based on the management of paper records. It's a very traditional records management program. It discusses everything in terms of boxes and filing cabinets, provides us no mention of the preservation of the electronic record. It adopted retention schedules for county and law enforcement records and really didn't address the fact that the court records, the Judicial Council of Georgia didn't issue its first retention schedule until 1999. So, it touched on court records, but it didn't fully cover them. It established an Archives and Records Administrator position who was to supervise the transfer of boxes to the record center and to establish a microfilm program. And it placed the onus of responsibility for implementing and developing records retention on the departments and not on the records management program. And finally, it failed to ensure a timely, a process for timely destruction of records to lower the county's legal and financial liabilities. The new ordinance proposes to update and modernize our records management plan to reflect the reality of both records management and business processes in the 21st century. We're acknowledging the use of new technologies to create, store, and communicate information, and it establishes a program to secure and manage our information assets. It establishes the county's reliance on the electronic record as its official record and as evidence of its activities. We're adopting retention schedules for county, law enforcement, and court records, but we're also allowing flexibility to enact stricter controls if operational activities need, requires stricter controls. It provides for the storage of both paper and electronic records in a secure, scalable environment. And finally, it establishes a process for the destruction of county records, whether paper or electronic, so that we can lessen our legal and financial liabilities, as well as it prevents records from sitting in limbo due to inaction by our departments. So I'm really hoping y'all will consider it.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's all we have.
Okay, so any questions from any Board members? It's obvious that our system and ordinance is antiquated because technology has evolved so much since 1996. But I appreciate the work that's going into taking a look and revamping our ordinance in reference to record retention. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, Commissioner Hambrick.
Yes, I would like to know about a backup system, what kind of backup system do we have?
The backup system, Commissioner, we actually have two systems. We have our primary backup and our offsite backup. That is duplicated so that if something happens to one, we're not geographically bound to the other place being going down as well.
Is that in paper and electronically?
Well, it's electronic. We can't duplicate all of the paper and have it in two different places that the current record center has. So, the electronic records and information is duplicated in two areas.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
The system that we're currently using, are we talking about getting a whole new system, rewriting the present system?
No.
Adding to the system?
So the county, two years ago, purchased a records management system called FITE. This is just using the features within the system to document and to perform the records management function and hold that information.
So are we talking about also, because I heard you say that they were on FISH before. Are there currently some on FISH, or?
We have some records on microfilm, yes, sir.
Okay.
The vast majority of them are still paper-based, as well as we have a tremendous volume of electronic records.
So are we talking about migrating everything? Meaning what's been in the past from the legal standpoint, or what we have to keep into the new system?
Yes, sir, so we have some very large Falcon scanners that we've been working and scanning and making the paper copies digital. And so it would just continue, it's not related to that, but it would continue that process of converting those paper records to electronic.
What's the timeframe for wanting to, designing to get this done? Besides yesterday?
Two days ago. So we are working as fast as we can with the departments, and we hope over the next...
Good answer.
I'll say 18 to 24 months to get our records scanned. It also depends upon how many scanners that we have. And so we have one, voters has three, that we're hoping that we can kind of help speed up the effort of scanning.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you both very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
At this time...
Oh, Chairman, Chairman!
Yes, Commissioner Hambrick.
I have something. Do they also keep the records for the elections department?
Mr. Brokens.
Yes, ma'am, we do have the election department records at the Record Center.
Oh, okay, well, I was just thinking of what happened in Fulton County, what, last week, sometimes, days ago? When an alarm went off and all that? And someone had broken in and gotten, you know, records or whatever?
I cannot speak to what Ms. Dozier does with the current records, with those records. I don't know if she keeps them in her office electronic. I know that we have some older voter records at the warehouse. But the current ones, I believe, if I'm correctly wrong, is this voter registration, keep them?
The electronic record, the voter scan, the machine scanners that you run your ballot through do store an electronic image of the ballot. The law currently states, however, that that paper ballot is the record. It comes to the Record Center a few weeks after the election, and we house it for the retention period that is required and, you know, in a secure environment.
Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Yes?
I just want to say thank you to particularly Amelia. I know Amelia, it's been a while, but I know record retention has been definitely a passion of yours and not only as a subject matter expert. So I am hoping that we can move forward into the 21st century so we can continue to secure all of our data. I'm sorry, so we can secure all of our data. That's all I have, so thank you for the presentation.
Okay, anything else? All right, thank y'all again. Next up is fiscal 2022 proposed budget. Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Ramona Bibbins.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. I'm not going to go through the whole presentation I did last week. The purpose this evening is to just highlight a couple of things that was discussed last week. I'm on due late, excuse me. Just do a summary of the proposed budget, talk about the compensation study that's included in the budget Phase Two. And then there's a question around the residential versus non-residential property values and the percentage that taxpayers or homeowners are paying versus what the non-residentials are paying. Last week during the meeting, we presented the proposed fiscal year 2022 general fund budget. We're projecting to begin 2022, which is July 1, '21, with $103 million in fund balance. We're projecting $226 million in revenues, $231.1 million in balances, with the $5.1 million difference, which that is for one-time capital items. And we will be using fund balance for that. That will leave us a projected ending fund balance on June 30 of 2022 of $97.9 million. As shown last week, the proposed budget includes items that continue to support the both of Board's established goals and specifically the Quality of Life Initiative and Personnel Area. We are including merit increase, about $2.9 million. It's for eligible employees on their anniversary dates. There's three tiers with a maximum of 3.75% increase, and it is going to be, again, based on the salary bands. So the first band, I don't remember the exact dollar amounts, but I know the top band was $80,000 and over would not be eligible for more than the 1.25%. And then the bands, I think it was 37 to, 40, 40 to 80, will only be eligible up to 2.5%. So regardless of their score. Also included is MAG study, Part Two, Option A, $800,000. We're also continuing the Public Safety Relocation Incentive, new positions for various departments at $2.1 million. New facilities that we had bought on board partially for this year, we had partially funded them for full-year operation. For partial year operations next year, we will have full-year operating expenses for the Northeast Senior Center, the Lakes Bible Recreation Center, the Northwest Library, and the Flint River Community Center. And then we also continuing the Clean County Initiative through co-enforcement with some additional infusion of funds there. Next, I'm going to talk about the compensation study. I got some information from HR and some of the data that I'm getting ready to present, the next few slides, actually were slides that she has presented, the HR director has presented in the past, but just wanted to go back over it to give the purpose of the compensation study and what we're trying to accomplish with Phase Two. So the compensation study, the goal was to establish a robust, modern, equitable, and legal compensation system. The study was conducted by the Management Advisory Group, I will here I can refer to as MAG. The implementation goal was to meet Clayton County's labor market, adjust compensation for those employees working below labor market, and then adjust the entry level compensation to meet market. The Board approved implementing that Phase One in fiscal year 2019. The funding was provided, $1.2 million, and it was implemented during the second half of the fiscal year on January 1 of 2019, and that impacted approximately 483 employees. Phase Two, which is included in the proposed budget. This phase is to address compression issues within the system. When MAG reviewed its classification, their focus was on the service dates and any salary deviation. They did, there was compensation compression which developed over time due either to no movement within the comp system or ineffective pay practices for performance. For several years, I don't even know, it's more than 10 years, there were no merit increases provided until we started back doing it again, I believe in 2018. So that caused compression. So there was little difference in pay for new hires. Someone could have been here for 10 years and would still be on possibly Step One because of no increases, and someone new would come in and they would make the same amount of money. So that's what the compression was, and that is the most common form that we had in this. And also tenure knowledge, skills, and abilities, also called KSAs, and performance was another cause for the little difference in pay. The allocation strategy is, again, based on tenure. You would get an increase based on significant milestones. So typically, seven years, 15 years, and 25 is when you would get the increase. The eligibility would be determined as of June 30 of each year. So if you hit that milestone by June 30 of that year, then your increase would become effective with the first pay period, not payday, but first pay period in July. So those with seven years of service, we show seven to 14 here because this phase, the initial implementation of Phase Two would cover anyone that falls into that category from seven to 14 years, because we haven't done it yet, this is the first. So when I get to the next slide, you'll see how many employees it is. Under Option A, they would get a 1.25%. Option B would be 2.5%. They have 15 to 24 years of service, they would receive 2.5% increase for Option A. Option B would be 3.75%. And those employees with 25 years or more service would receive 3.75% under Option A and 5% under Option B. So this slide shows the number of employees as of June 30 of this year that would be impacted and would receive the appropriate percentage of increase based on the milestone effective with the first pay period in July. So the total number is 839 employees of the initial that would be impacted. That won't be 839 moving forward, because again, this is to address the compression. So this would include all those employees in each category. The green, let's start with the green, because that's the seven to 14 years of experience. We have 558 employees in that category. Under Option A, they would receive the 1.25%. The blue bar shows the employees that are at 15 to 24 years of service. We have 234 employees that would be impacted, and they would receive the 2.5% of the, the 2.5% under Option A. And then we have 47 that have 25 or more years of experience that would receive the 3.75% under Option A. This is just, oh, let me go back, because I wanted to give the dollar amount. To do this one, again, as I stated, it was, the total is $1.1 million, but only $880,000 of that would be in the general fund, which is part of the proposed budget. The remaining amount would be in all the other funds, they would handle that. This slide shows Option B. Again, same number of employees, the number of employees doesn't change for this initial implementation. However, the total cost would change, it would be an increase because the bands change, as I showed earlier, to 2.5, 3.75, and 5% for each one. So that total cost would be $1.8 million for everyone. However, $1.4 million would be for the general fund. And that would be an additional $602,000 to the general fund if we opted to go that way. But when we were doing the budget presentation after speaking with the Chairman, he recommended that we include Option A. The next item I wanted to talk about was the residential versus non-residential property taxes and the payment of those taxes for each category. Last week, I sent all of you a spreadsheet that showed the percentage of the taxes paid. And that spreadsheet for the commercial, I had included just two categories, where there's actually, I believe, about nine different categories that could be considered residential and non-residential. In that, I just captured the commercial category and the industrial. After speaking with the tax assessor, I determined that the residential would include the residential category on there as well as mobile homes, because those are people's residence as well. So the next slide that I'll show you is going to be based on that, on those categories, grouping those together as residential and non-residential. But before we go to the actual slide to show you the percentages, I want to just talk a little bit about the digest growth. This shows the current year and the last five years of our digest. And as you can see, from 2016 to this year, we have increased our values from $6 billion in 2016 to almost $9 billion in this calendar tax year. That value exceeds our pre-recession values before the housing bubble happened. So we've gotten back to that pre-recession values, which is a good thing. As I stated last week, I'm proposing to maintain the same net mortgage rate. So we would have to reduce the gross mortgage rate in order to do that, and that would result in a levy of $135.4 million as a gross value. So on those assessed values that I just showed, on the net assessed values, this is a percentage of the residential versus the non-residential values. So in 2019, the far right, we see the green is non-residential, the orange is residential. I broke out agricultural because that really didn't fit, it could be residence or non. So at the top to the tax assessor, we said we would separate that one out. And then in the other category, there's the conservation preferential and motor vehicles that we had on the digest, and those have slowly gone up because of T A B T. You see here that 56.8% of the assessed values was for the non-residential, 41.8 was for residential. In 2020, that increased slightly for non-residential, and residential pretty much remained the same last year. However, this year, the residential, or, I'm sorry, non-residential or commercial, if you want to call it that, decreased by about 2%, and the residential increased some. And that is mainly due because of the current housing market. If anybody's taken economics, everybody knows the law of supply and demand. Right now, we supply houses, it's not meeting the demand. So when the supply, or when demand exceeds supply, that drives up the price. So when the tax assessor is doing the appraisals, they also have to take into consideration market value. And there's a sales ratio study that is done that, well, we have to be within a certain ratio. And I can't, I don't know 100% of it, but I just know that there is a ratio that we have to meet to be in compliance with the state. So although the values are not at what the market rate is, they have to be within a certain percentage of that. So that's why the residential values have gone up some and the commercial has gone down. However, the commercial still exceeds residential's 55.6% based on the preliminary digest and 44.2% for the residential. So again, just to recap, what we're proposing for the fiscal year 22 general fund budget, revenues are $226 million, with expenses at $231.1, and a use of $5.1 million of our fund balance for those one-time capital items for building and maintenance repairs. As I stated last week, when we adopt the budget, we have to approve all funds, which is the general fund, special revenue, capital projects, debt service, internal service funds, the enterprise funds, and the pension trust funds. So our total budget for all funds is $350,958,000, and that's what we will be presenting next week. We will have one item that we will need to add to the general fund budget. We will, once someone has been appointed as the interim sheriff, because we will have to pay the sheriff and the interim, that is not in the budget. So we will need to do an amendment to the budget to add additional funds to pay the interim sheriff during the time that that's started. We've already had the public hearing last week. The next week, we will have the budget on the regular agenda for adoption. And once we get the final digest from the tax assessors at the end of this month, probably, or 1st of July, we'll determine if we need to have any hearings on the mortgage rate. And if we will have to advertise and have the public hearing if necessary at that time. That's all I have, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for the update. Are there any questions from Ms. Bibbins?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Franklin.
Okay. First of all, thank you so very much for bringing this information back to the Board. This is extremely helpful as we go through this process and this exercise. In regards to the public relocation funding, is there any way that we can receive information on how this fund has been used? Because a lot of times we'll put things in place, but I want to know, are they being utilized up to now? And I may, I think you may have gone over that before, but do you have that information, or would you need to bring it back to us?
We can, Dennis is actually, Mr. Johnson, I'm sorry, is actually looking to form me to get that information in the system.
Okay, wonderful. Also, I did hear from a couple of the employees that the MAG study that was presented some time ago, and in fact, it was about two or three years ago, what's presented as an option now is quite different than the option from before. So that's one that I do want to do a quick deeper dive on because that information was put out to our employees and to the public. So I want to take a look at the differences in that, that's one thing I want to look at beyond the options. So that's really good that we have that information on the options. And it's really good to see that our housing market has finally got to pre-recession values, especially considering the fact that we're just coming out of COVID. The CARES Act funding, we did, did we take into consideration any additional funding we would be receiving in any of these numbers that have been reported to us?
Commissioner, that's a great question. At the time that we prepared the budget, we didn't have any clear guidelines on how those funds could be used. We have some more, a little more clear guidelines, but still not 100, excuse me, not 100% clear. And we're not the only jurisdictions, everybody's calling, everybody's trying to figure out, well, can we use it for this, can we use it for that? However, Mr. COO, myself, and some of the other department heads, including Public Safety, we had a meeting with some of our non-governmental organizations a couple of weeks ago, and we've gotten requests from everyone, including the hospital, the water authority, behavioral health, mental health department, who else? Am I missing somebody? Housing Authority, a plethora of people, and so everyone has submitted... Housing authority, a plethora of people, and so everyone has submitted their items. Next week, we're meeting to, um, scrub those, both of those, see what is eligible, and we're planning, we are preparing to bring a recommendation to the board at the next work session for approval, hopefully at the first board meeting in July, um, so we'll know then what, anything that's in here, we will be considering that, that we can pay for and make a budget amendment at that time in July for any changes where we can reallocate some of the funding in our general fund budget.
Okay, wonderful. Also, that we, one more question, I believe, I have in my notes, that we, um, take into consideration in regards to our public safety workers, as I've requested before, um, for the additional, um, coverages of life insurance, particularly because we know that what we're offering right now is much lower than, um, what the surrounding counties of our population are offering, so, uh, do we have any information back on that at this particular time?
At this time, I have not received anything from our human resources department regarding that, and it has not been included in the proposed budget.
Right, cause that information can be given back quickly, I know it's been several weeks now. Um, as, as Commissioner, I would like to see that information as soon as possible, so that we can take that into consideration.
Okay, I will pass that along, and, um, back, while I had this information before, I forget, the public safety relocation in fiscal year twenty, we spent a little over eight-thousand dollars, paid out a little over eight-thousand dollars, and in the current fiscal year, we paid out, um, to date seventeen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars, so we've included twenty-thousand dollars in next year's budget, so it is being used.
Good.
Awesome, that's good to see, thank you.
Thank you.
My only question is, is the, in reference to one of Commissioner Franklin's question, about the increase in insurance, even if it's not included within this budget, we can always come back, come back as we get additional information and amend it into the budget later.
Yes, I got it, it's correct, we can amend it into the budget at a later time.
The Chair, if it's okay, I'll wait.
No, go ahead.
Um, it doesn't, just, to be quite honest with you, this, it doesn't take long to get that information back, we should be able to receive that information prior to going through this process, it's, we have our census, we have the data information, it's really, um, a, a, a quick amount, and it takes a little amount of time to get that information back, so I, I think that, um, it would be definitely, um, incumbent upon us to go ahead and get that done sooner than later, because I, I just don't want that to drag on, because just like the record system, it's been many years since that's been reevaluated.
And I understand, I hear you loud and clear, the only reason why I stated that was to make sure that everybody understands that there is an option if we do miss that window by some, some reason, rhyme or reason, but we will definitely consider, have those options available to us to take care of our public safety folks, that was the only reason why I mentioned it.
I'm clear, thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
I do, as far as that Option B, that, you, did I hear that that dips into our general fund?
Okay, no, both of them are included in general fund. That Option B was at a higher rate, it would, um, cost us an additional...
Eight-hundred thousand?
Two-thousand dollars, um, for the general fund, we would have to find the funding, if you wanted to do Option B, if the board so desired, we would have to find additional funding to cover that, if you wanna do Option B instead of Option A, I just wanted to give you both options that we, that were, um, that the human resource director presented, and the one that the chairman and the, and, um, the C-level staff and we all discussed it, um, what was selected, I will decide to put in the budget, in the proposal.
Okay, and also with that, um, could we, and I know I'm not putting you on the spot for this one, but could we begin to, um, I know we've gotta begin to look at increasing salaries, um, with our, with the current economic outlook and that's going on now, is our fund balance, do you believe in a healthy state to begin to, uh, offset anything that we might have, any kind of event that we might have, as well as the, um, without having to raise the millage rate, and raise taxes?
Yes, um, our fund balance is at a, we're at a good place in fund balance, I think, when I started here, I think our fund balance was at forty million dollars, eight years ago, forty, forty-eight million dollars, and each year, um, through savings, um, monitoring the expenses, we have been able to increase our fund balance, so we in a good, uh, position, even when the pandemic came along, we weren't just too nervous, because we had a good, healthy fund balance to offset any reduction in revenue, which is one of the things that fund balance can be used for, in addition to the one-time, um, capital expenses.
Right, great, cause I'm just thinking, in one term, with, with the price of everything going up, those splotch dollars are not gonna go as far as they went two years ago, with building some of the same type of buildings and, and, uh, structures. All right, thank you.
Miss.
Commissioner Franklin, you say so?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to step up, those of, um, Commissioner Davis, but the point is, I wanna, number one, piggyback on what Commissioner Davis said, um, and I wanna make this comment, I remember years ago, I had a conversation with Truitt Cathy, and this was during the recession, and he said, you know what, we're not building another building at this point, what we're going to do is maintain what we have, and, um, they paid everything off, and as you can see right now, um, Chick-fil-A is running over, and now they're back to rebuilding stage, so I say all of that to say, I hear Commissioner Davis's statement, but one thing we gotta keep in mind as we continue our splotch projects, I know we gotta continue to one over international and, and many of the others that we've committed to, but I think it's imperative that we keep in mind as we move through, more so than the fund balance, as we build out our facilities, that we add in the cost of personnel upfront. I know we've started doing that, but, um, I think that we need to do a little bit of a deeper dive into that space, so that we can ensure that we are in a, um, healthy financial situation, uh, and then, and that brings up a point, there oftentimes, there are positions and things that are stated that would be in certain areas of the county, and I wanna do a deeper dive on those personnel areas. I can only speak to District Three, one of them was having somebody down a river's edge, um, and the other was having a, um, onsite officer over at, uh, Flint River, and I, I know there have been some things put in place, but I just wanted to do it, not to have an ask, a deeper dive on that, and then, um, to pivot to one other thing, did we count all the planes this time? I know last time there was some planes that weren't counted, and we went back and added them in, are we sure we counted every plane this time, airplane?
To my knowledge, they have, but that would be a tax assessor question, I think they did, cause when I looked at, when Dennis and I, I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson and I looked, um, kinda compared to see where we were last year, and to see what the gross, what, growth was for this year, it looks like everything was in line.
Okay, cause I'll go help count if you need me to now.
Me too, cause I want all my coins.
No, that's true, thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
Anything else, any other questions? Again, thank you, Madam CFO and, uh, your staff for this update, and if there is nothing else for this board, we will stand adjourned.